Good evening and thank you for joining us. If you'll please rise for the political allegiance.
The allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you for joining us this evening. We have a full house, which is great to see. All right, first on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, so moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, excellent, thank you. Next, part of our favorite part of the meeting is special recognition. The first is school counselors and social workers appreciation. And for this, I will, we have a proclamation that we are going to have Director Perkins read.
State of Washington proclamation. Whereas, school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential. And whereas, school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas, school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas, school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas, school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas, comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school, now therefore, I, J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, will hereby proclaim February 4th through the 8th, 2019, as School Counseling Week in Washington. And I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance.
Great. John, do we have somebody that's representing us this evening?
I believe so. I think there's a couple people coming up.
Great.
And while they're making their way up, I just want to recognize all the counselors for the amazing work that they do. Over the last decade, we have seen more needs come into the public education system than ever before, probably in the history of our country. And the variety of work that our counselors have taken on and continue to take on on a daily basis is just amazing. And to see the work that our caring staff do in and out every single day and beyond the school day. And at those times where we have our smart teams that come together is when sorrowfully our staff really shine. And we've had all too many opportunities for that to occur. But when I see them at work with kids really hurting and in need, you see the true quality of individuals that we have in our district, and I want to thank them. I'll turn it over to you guys now.
Thank you.
I'm Carl Smith, Assistant Director of Student Services, and I'm here to acknowledge and recognize some elementary counselors. Each year, we ask principals to nominate counselors who have excelled in their position. And this year, we have, I think, five present and nine were nominated. So I'd like to call them up if I can, but I want to hand this over to Ruben first because he may have some of this.
Thank you, Carl. Good evening. I'm Ruben Dorf, Director of School Services. And along with the elementary side, I would like to recognize several phenomenal secondary counselors as well for their work that they've been doing. In addition to the proclamation and what Dr. Steed shared, I think what stands out about these individuals in my work, in their buildings, and throughout the district is really their leadership that they're demonstrating both in their schools and across the district with their colleagues. And so I really appreciate the level of professionalism and leadership and their collaborative nature.
So if we announce your name, please come up and introduce yourself to the board when you get the microphone. Lisa Puck from Harmony Elementary School. Emily Kirsten-Grippe from Endeavor. Reena Lutwall from Burton. Tiffany Morrison from Rithivu. Did I miss any of the elementary people?
Yeah. And then if I can please have Kimberly Curry from White East Middle School. Deana Uzer from Union High School. Leslie King from Frontier. Heather Leonard, also from Frontier Middle School. Bobby Arnold from Evergreen High School. And Erin Drummond from Pacific was not able to join this evening, but I'd like to recognize her as well.
Thank you for everything that you do for our students every day. I know, even though my kids have been out of school for a little while, the neighborhood school counselors made a huge difference for them. And it mattered a lot for our family.
Oh, good.
Plus, we know that the work is more and more challenging every day. We have, you know, more and more new crises that are coming up. And so we thank you for all of those efforts to keep our kids safe and secure in the schools and keeping them wanting to come back.
Thank you.
And social emotional learning and development, sorry.
It's all good.
I didn't want to cut in on anyone else. But social emotional learning and development are so critical for us in the district. I mean, that's been a real focus for us. And so the work that you're doing as counselors and social workers, I mean, you're right on the forefront of, you know, being right there for the kids and helping them. And so, yeah, we as a board really applaud the work that you do. So thank you very much.
This hits me a little more personally because I have a child who has needed, desperately needed, an elementary-level counselor at one point. And the two counselors who advised us and aided him were indispensable in that moment to help him finally feel comfortable at school. It took years, but those first few, those first few months when he began to feel so afraid, they were there. And I appreciate it. It's good work.
Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge two people that are here tonight. LaI Berontu, who is a clinical psych who works at a 49th Street Academy, has also been nominated for this award. And Tim Sunkel from Fishers is also nominated. And Judy's going to come up and sing a song on this. No, I'm joking. Judy showed up to support because Tim couldn't tonight. So thank you very much. You guys are awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight.
All right, and next is the Evergreen Award, which we started last year and is very popular. And the board loves it. We love this night when we get to recognize our employees. So I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Stich.
And I'm going to turn it right over to Janine Gons.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. This is our quarterly award for Evergreen Awards. And if I may just take a moment and address the audience to explain what that is for those that have not been here. This is the award for employees that is nominated on through all of the staff members. And it's recognizing that hard work that they're putting forth, the relationships they're building with the students. And we just really want to take the opportunity and thank them, acknowledge them, recognize them. And there's three different awards. There's classified, certificated, and the third one is a group or an administrator. And this evening, we will recognize classified, cert, and admin. So thank you for that. And the first one this evening, we'll start with classified. And this is Christina Brown with Cascadia. And Mark Mansell is going to come up and speak and say a few words.
I'm Mark Mansell, the Director of Cascadia Tech. We are blessed to serve so many students across the county. Cascadia Tech provides career technology education opportunities for all nine districts in Clark County. And so we are really blessed to have a quality staff. And one of those staff members, Christina, serves as our student success advocate. Talk about being on the front lines of helping those students that have the highest need. Christina took on this role two years ago, this is her second year in that. And it's been phenomenal, the impact that she's had in the lives of our kids. Everything from basic supports, whether it's a gas card, or food, or clothes, to help them. But she also works on attendance and through those conversations tries to remove the barriers that prevents kids from getting to our school. And some of those barriers are significant because they're coming from all over the county. And so through her effort, her leadership, we've actually seen our attendance go up from 90% to almost 94% as a result of many things. But her leadership in that role, she's also been part of Camp Cascadia, which is another effort that we started this past summer to help kids with the repining credits and also had attendance issue. And as a result of that program, those kids have had phenomenal improvements. And many of these come right back to Christina and her leadership with kids, but also with the staff. So on behalf of the staff, we're super excited to have you be recognized for this wonderful award. You're well deserving of it, so congratulations.
It looks like there's a few people from Cascadia here tonight. And do you have family that joined you?
Call them.
Personal family.
This is so important. It's really need the support. Before we move on to the next one, I just wanted to actually take a brief moment just to share with you that Mark is going to be retiring from Cascadia. And he's done such an amazing job in moving it to a new level, the support, the work that you do. I'm really going to miss you. And because we're here tonight, I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge and recognize him.
Echo what Janine was saying, that three years ago, when we had kind of a late departure of our Director of Cascadia, Mark was basically asked or voluntold or strong-armed in stepping in and said he would give us three years. And really has done a commendable job in that role of stabilizing and expanding programs and improving upon the school and providing very systemic structures for the long-term health of Cascadia. Even so much so, is working very hard right now to see if we can get some legislative, or work from the legislature to fund new facilities to replace the oldest skill center buildings in the state at what is the largest skill center and probably the most underfunded skill center historically with capital money. And Mark's been a major driving force. And hopefully, we'll leave your legacy with the buildings just like you have with the staff and the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next, we will recognize certificated Evergreen Award. And this is Sybil Boyter with Pacific Middle School. And Heather Thiessen's going to come up and say a few words.
Good evening. In the course of our work in education, we quickly come to realize the value of the people we interact with. We look for individuals who spark joy, risk greatly, and above all, believe in the potential of all the students we serve. Sybil is one of these individuals. In my almost three years at Pacific, I have come to know and appreciate the compassion, perseverance, and determination that she brings to her work. She embodies the Viking Way, and I'm honored to work alongside her each day. I wanted to read the nomination because Sybil doesn't know what it says. And I think our teacher librarian Cindy McLean really, well, you'll see. I would love to nominate Sybil Boyter as the recipient of the Evergreen Award. Sybil is that one person in the building who consistently volunteers to lead and/or help out with programs that support students academically, physically, and emotionally. She is also a beacon of light for the staff here at Pacific. She always has a smile for everyone. She is positive and uplifting, and she has boundless energy for spearheading the work throughout the building. Sybil has been a consistent, integral part of the Pacific Food Pantry since it started several years ago. She comes in during her free time to fill the bags for Friday pickup by sales. She shops for the needed groceries. She stocks the shelves and rotates the stock. Basically, she does the whole job of a team of people. The pantry couldn't survive without her. Sybil has also volunteered to get the PBIS training going in our building. She went to all of the initial trainings for the program. She began doing the professional development training for our staff to get us on board and take baby steps to begin implementation. Now, she continues to support the staff individually and at PD during staff meetings to get year one in full swing. She is a one-woman cheering squad for our kids, dancing with the flash mob on Hook's Wednesday mornings, greeting them at the door with a smile, and helping to make sure every student has a personal contact every day. Whenever we need help or an extra hand, we call Sybil. She is a huge part of the heart and soul of Pacific Middle School. We can do our work without you.
No.
I have a bunch of family members here.
Well, let's recognize them.
We're friends, we're friends, and my parents are here, and my kids are in the back.
It's so important. We can't do this work without our families and our spouses and staff support. And it's important for them to be recognized as well. Our third nomination this evening is administration, and it's Holly Long. Holly, you can come up. And Jay, you know, is going to come up and say a few words. Holly's husband is a basketball coach this evening. And because of our weather and some of the snow, there's a makeup game, so her family is there. Some nominating cabinet to stand up on me, those supporters. Yeah, because Holly has been an integral piece of our world with the outbreaks and the measles. And she has kept us all sane, and so we're going to be that support for you tonight.
So I get the privilege of talking a little bit about Holly. I will talk about the measles. I really don't want to. And Holly's outfit is. I get the privilege of working with Holly every day. Holly supervises and supports our nursing and health services and oversees 504 and works with ADA for both adults and students. And works on immunizations for the district. And more importantly, puts up with me every day. She does an amazing job of figuring out how to get students support. I mean, I will literally say, we need a nurse. And she says, I don't have one. And then an hour later, comes up and figures out a plan for her kids. And she had an amazing opportunity to engage with the Department of Health in the last few weeks. She spearheaded the district's support and did an amazing job with responding to measles, outbreak, and just amazing amount of work. I remember the first day I called her, she was at a basketball game. In the background, I could hear the band playing, or, you know, the crowd cheering. And she steps out and began a weekend's worth of work, literally, in figuring out how to respond and did an amazing job at it. And so it's my privilege to acknowledge Holly.
I can just expand a little bit on that. Holly is, during this outbreak, is the sole person for the students, the staff. She's fielding questions nonstop. Her phone, I'm surprised she still answers it. Always pleasant, always with patience. And there's just so many questions unanswered and the wonderings, and she just led that amazingly. And so thank you for everything that you've done.
It's not, it's not often that something you're working on is making the national news already.
I'd like to throw in that I've talked to Dr. Melnick several times over the last several weeks. And one of the things that he wanted to stress to me was that Holly was the best school nursing coordinator he has ever worked with. And said that what she did for Evergreen was amazing. So he gave you his gold star of commendation.
So again, this evening, all of these individuals are being recognized for their outstanding work that they do in our schools and with our students and our staff. And we could get a picture with all of you and them. And thank you to the support of the schools in here and families, and appreciate that.
Oh, I'll let the picture taker, you guys can come up here. All right. Come on, the rest of the picture takers. Yeah, come on, you get a nice picture.
All right, so one, two.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I don't want to trip you with that. Well, that was the fun part of our meeting. So now we will move into board consent agenda. Probably not as fun. This is your chance to go. All right, board consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move for approval of board consent agenda.
Move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. All right, next we will move on to the superintendent consent agenda. Again, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Move in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Superintendent's report. Also, we have our superintendent.
And I'm going to be rather brief tonight. Only got a few things. First thing that I was going to point out was that we do, are past all of our exclusion period for measles in all of our schools.
All right.
All the kids and staff are back. I was going to commend Holly, which I already did, but I also wanted to recognize our HR department and Janine, as well as Gail Spohler, for the roles that they played. I was talking to Gail today, and I think it's the New York Times wants to run an article on us. And they were hoping that there was some story about all of us sitting around at like a conference table strategizing through this whole thing. But as you just heard, more or less, it rolled out over the weekend with people at basketball games, doing housework, a variety of things. And basically, just through cell phones and laptops, this whole thing was coordinated. So the fact that our staff was able to do this in a way that most people didn't realize, we never actually came together in a single room to do this over the weekend, is a commendation to outstanding individuals we have in these roles. We're continuing to mess with winter weather. We'll continue to monitor that. Also, wanted to thank Transportation for getting up dark and early with me on all of these mornings. We're up at 4:00 checking things and driving around and trying to make decisions. Last week was a little dicey because at 6:30, we looked fine. And by 7:00, I got a call from Transportation saying we weren't getting any buses up McKenzie Hill, which was just slush at 6:30. So things changed on us so rapidly Tuesday, that's why we had somewhat of a late closure. But again, thanks to all the individuals who make that happen and our maintenance crews who are out there doing their best to get the parking lots, sidewalks, all cleared and salted. And then from a capital project standpoint, we're continuing to make great progress. We did interviews for the Mountain View General Contractor, and we'll hopefully be awarding that fairly soon. We've got, doing the final parts on that. And then last, or the last week and the week before, we had our equity team look at the design drivers on equity and access for our schools. We did an initial one back in November, but had very low attendance, so we wanted to redo it with our equity team, had them looking at it. And it was refreshing as we were reporting out on the things that needed to be included in the design to have them describe many of the components that are currently in our prototypical elementary school. So that was very positive, and that was the last of those design driver meetings. And that's all I've got for tonight.
Great, thank you. All right, next is a focus on student results. We have a results for citizenship monitoring report. This is a first reading. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Stich.
And I'm going to turn this over to Matt Handelman, our Chief Academic Accountability Officer, who's been compiling all the data on R4. And he'll walk you through what we did, we discussed in workshop two weeks ago. And hopefully, it'll come up on the screen so that it's not just droning on like I've been doing lately.
I got you.
I did fill out a sheet on the new boardroom today, and one of the things I said is we need a less complex and more reliable laptop system for projecting or displaying in board meetings.
Elizabeth's got it.
Good evening.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi. So as you know, as Dr. Steed said, we've been compiling all of this information. It's not just me. James Canton-Mind played a great role, as did a lot of other people, helping to put it together. As you know, also, from our conversations over the last year and a half and from recent workshop, this is our first go at this. So we've been trying to figure out whether those indicators that we have suggested to you as good evidence of our work in the area of citizenship are indeed capturable, measurable, and whether they're going to be the best moving forward for the district. So we've, we've put together what we have. You'll notice that there are a couple of gaps because there are places that we don't have the data yet. But we will go through this as deeply as you want to. I know you've seen it a couple of times. We've done a couple of additions based on your input, especially Rob Perkins' input at our workshop a couple weeks ago. Again, the results policy reads that students will understand, model, and advance the interconnectedness of individuals, cultures, and communities and their environment. So each of the subcategories that you see up on the screen have, have these evidence that you have sort of given your nod to. Some of them have to do with our student report cards, so it's adults who are reporting on this. Some of it has to do with our SEL, our social emotional learning survey panorama, which is student self-reporting. Some of it has to do with also our culture and climate survey and a number of other places. One thing I do want to make sure to point out to you is on each of these, there's either an O, which means that it's an outcome-based piece of data. Or there are some that also have Ps, like this one, which means it's process-based. In other words, not necessarily specific evidence, proof that has happened, but it's proof of our work or our students' work in those areas. So again, the very first one has to do with the practice duties and responsibilities and rights of citizenship in democratic society. All of these percentages in this, in this top one, or the first couple of them have to do with our student report card, also with student discipline data and our school-wide information. information system. I don't think you want me to read all the numbers to you, but if you have any questions along the way, just stop me. Here's one of the ones that we have not figured out yet, how to determine our students who have registered to vote. There are some very sensitive areas within that as we've talked about and trying to dig up that information. We are working on some processes that we might be able to have in place within the next year. You'll notice this first process one just talks about the curricular areas where we have government taught, specifically around social studies and history. There's some overlap as you see with R2. In the successful transition, although we have some information about our special education students, we have recently subscribed to the National Clearinghouse, which will get beyond just this data that is one of the indicators here, will have a lot of very interesting data that I'm sure you'll be interested to dig into and see how our students are doing in terms of going to college, success in college. There are a lot of data points that are aggregated and disaggregated. In the area of cultural competency, again, some process or information about our coursework that we offer in different grade levels, around cultural understanding. And then in terms of culturally compassionate behavior, we have some panorama data, again, the social, emotional and cultural climate surveys. Over on the right, one addition that you didn't see at the workshop was that table of national norms. As we discussed, we can only do that at the, at the sort of topical level as opposed to the question level, so there's a chart that's for each of them that shows how we're doing. As we will acknowledge, we have plenty of room to grow as we do in a lot of areas and that's why we're here, continuous improvement. So more about discipline, HIV stands for harassment, intimidation, bullying, and again, those are recorded by our manager, risk management, so again, one of those places where we need to reach out and get information from others. Culturally relevant instruction, section on that, again, these are all process-oriented and again, that third column, you see a little bit of explanation of the data points. You can stop me if you have comments or questions. 4.3 students will be respectful and compassionate. This one spot where there's a blank, we probably should have put an NA, but there's an explanation over in that third column that there's not a question for the elementary students in that area and that's why it's blank. Our work around PBIS, for positive behavior intervention supports, it's key in this area. Again, process showing that we're working to help our students toward these goals. More specifically around student behavior, some of it is sort of a repeat in terms of the HIV data, it's just a different way to look at it, in letter A there. And this is one area that specifically Director Perkins was asking about at the workshop and so we gathered, we did gather some more information and you might be interested to click into those two attachments that are on the right-hand side in terms of students being involved in service projects. There were a couple of places that we dug in at your suggestion. More of student self-reporting from the panorama SEL survey. And again, most of this is baseline, as we go through the years, you'll be able to see how is it changing from year to year as long as we keep using the panorama survey. More outcomes based on elementary report card. 4.4 is one, I remember a couple summers ago spending quite a bit of time in your conversations around how to word this in terms of advocating for change and having that word appropriately advocating for change, interesting in today's society as we continue to grapple with those things at the national level as well as the local level and in our schools. Need to be good role officers. Another one that I remember you spending quite a bit of time talking about, the wording of students will be good towards their environment as opposed to necessarily the environment, so the world around them, so it's not just the physical world or the, or the nature as we might think of the environment, but all of their surroundings and trying to find different ways. Again, information around the recycling and there's information from Zeus Seibrenner about the green, green schools. And then on another level, again, our social studies as opposed to looking at government or culturally sensitive, or culturally relevant curriculum, this is around global exposure. So again, process-wise, we gathered some information about that. So, long story short or short story long, that's the end of it. Are there any questions or comments about the monitoring for R4?
I really appreciate, this was probably one of the more difficult ones to come up with evidence and how to, how to actually prove that we're doing what we're doing and, but it's such a key area for our students. I mean, in a, in a world that's getting so complex and can be so hard and to have our students be good citizens and good people, we really have to be intentional about that social, emotional learning and, and so I appreciate what the thoughtfulness that's gone into trying to figure out ways to prove what we're doing and how we're doing it. So, thank you for the effort and I know it's kind of evolving and we're just at kind of baseline, but I know this has been one of the trickier ones.
Agreed and you know, one of the most important things, and we can do all the measuring we want to, but if we don't do teaching around it, then it's, you know, it's just, you know, there's the expression, just way in the paint, right?
Yeah.
So, I was just talking to James Canton-Mind about that yesterday. So, so we need to make sure that we're considering how are we improving our efforts as adults to improve the outcomes for kids.
And these were our talking topics that we took to our breakfast with the boards, a lot of these outcomes. So it, it was nice to have this data to present, you know, and ask them what they thought about the information that was coming back. So it was, it was great to have that to kind of show them, this is what's coming out of all of our schools. Thank you.
Yeah, and I like having the numbers. I mean, I realize this is the baseline here, but a couple of things struck me and we talked about this a couple of weeks ago as well, but I really like that look of participation in ASV elections and on this election night, it said 43%, which I guess seems somewhat low, but I realize it's the baseline and hopefully that can be improved upon in future years. The other thing that struck me was the, looking at the special education students and what was it, 68% either were going on higher education or had, you know, employment and that was up from 63% the year before, which I think is great. And so obviously the trend is in the right direction. Those are two measurables that I really appreciate looking at amongst others. So yeah, thank you.
And the special ed is very, very high in relation to the rest of the state, so commendations for Jay and his whole crew working on that.
I, it just happened on the correlation between membership in a service organization, CPSO, and voting patterns, just a couple of months before, we had this conversation two weeks ago and I gather that there was some verity to that research that you found.
Well, you know, again, we don't have the, necessarily the correlation of whether those students actually voted in the ASV elections, for example, or whether they're registered to vote, but it's certain, you know, Susan Dixon was, was all over right away and I asked her the next day about, about what we asked about and she was able to pull together the data pretty quickly and again, it'll be interesting, I think, to look longitudinally at those students and the amount of participation we have because we know some great programs which, you know, which have those clubs attached to them.
And I've enjoyed every look I've had into things like We the People at Heritage High School and anecdotally, I think it bears out, there was a lot of political participation a couple of years ago from Heritage graduates, even partisan participation that sort of bears out the idea that membership and participation in these classes and the service organizations means something. Keep me apprised of the research if you find it, I'm very curious about that and thank you for putting it together so quickly.
Thanks, Susan Dixon.
Thank you, Susan, for putting it together.
So as Matt mentioned, we have three areas, or two areas on here with exception. One is the voter registration data, we still haven't come to terms with how to do that. And then the follow-up on our graduates through the National Clearinghouse that we won't have till this spring, so we'll bring that data back just as an addendum to this at that time. And then also just a clarification under 44A1, that we had not specified what grade levels we were going to be having in writing and social studies for advocacy. And now that we've nailed that down and recommended, we would just change the verbiage within that to be one through eight and 10 through 12. So, with that, I would recommend at this time that the board accepts the monitoring report for results policy, R4 citizenship, as presented for first reading and moved forward for second reading as reasonable progress with noted exceptions.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we will call on the audience for questions or comments regarding this monitoring report. Alright, seeing none, then we will ask for a motion from the board.
Recommend accepting the monitoring report for results policy, R4. Citizenship is presented for first reading and moved forward for second reading as reasonable progress with noted exceptions.
Second. Great, so move in second and then we'll open it up for additional board questions or comments. Only thing I want to say is, Matt, I think you said it right, that's continuous improvement, that beginning that baseline data and then moving forward and how we present it and how we keep working and I like what Jimmy said, that we're already using it as a board team on the way we work with our focus groups and some of our communication out to our students in district.
Oh yeah, and how did that work out? Did that spark a lot of conversation?
I know for me and Rob, and it sounds like potentially a lot of them, that wasn't their results, that that was, that's been the other schools.
Yeah, that was the pattern of the conversation. It's like, it's not happening here, but I can totally believe it's happening.
I think we had some really good conversation around the one that Victoria and I did.
With the kids?
Yes. Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, we had really good conversation with our students, we loved it.
Alright, any other questions or comments from the board? Alright, then at this time, we will now take a vote to present R4 for a second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, we'll bring that back for a second reading on February 26th. Alright, next up is board comments. Todd, you should probably say something.
Okay, I'm going to say something. This is my last board meeting and it's bittersweet, but personally it's time, personally it's my time to move on and I was thinking, I think I started on the board July 2008, so it's been, I think about 11 years. It's gone by in some ways fast, but when I think about my youngest child, our youngest child, my Y2Lanes here, she just finished fourth grade and now she's a junior in college. So something has happened at a amount of time, but what I'll remember most is how the team, and I'll say the collective team, board, superintendent, staff, have really pulled together during tough times and I would say it was tough during the Great Recession. I think it was like the first five years I was on the board, we were cutting that budget every year, but the team pulled together to do what's best for kids. I really appreciated that. Also really appreciated, six years ago when Crestline Elementary School burned down, it was just amazing how the staff and the community just pulled together to try to make an awful situation better for our kids. And so, I know facing us going forward is a budget deficit and so, I have a lot of confidence in the team to be able to pull together again because it's a, it's a tough situation, but with the board, superintendent, community, staff, trying to figure out the right priorities as well as making decision on what's best for kids, I think that'll be the, you know, a good approach and I have full confidence in the team. And lastly, what I'll remember most are the people. I've really enjoyed working with the current board members, I've really enjoyed working with past board members, I've really enjoyed working with Superintendent Steach as well as Superintendent Dieter and all the staff of the district. I mean, you've been tremendous to help me personally and so, and the board as well, but I'm just talking about me now, so.
Talk about you.
But I really appreciate it, you've all been a part of my life and for that, I'll be forever grateful and I'm grateful for having the honor to be able to serve on the school board for the last few years, so thank you very much.
I have a few words. I've been on the board the longest with Todd and it's going to be, we're going to miss you a lot. Todd has been the steady, just even keeled voice on the board, logical, kind, just a very sweet soul that, I've never heard him raise his voice, never seen him get ruffled by anything, always kind of a voice of reason, which I have appreciated so many times. And truly always had the best for the children and the people in our community, never somebody with an axe to grind or a special agenda, except maybe food and music.
What's wrong with that?
I always loved, loved eating with Todd because he just loves, loves everything, you know, loves wherever we were at, wherever we're going to be and just always such a pleasant, happy person to be around and I'm, I'm just going to really miss you. I appreciate everything you've done for us on the board.
Thanks, Vic.
I agree. Todd, I have loved watching your passion for the students in our district and just the excitement that you get when you watch them present something to us, if it's music, if it's STEM-related, whatever it is, graduations, it's been just fun to have you as a part of our board. I've learned a lot from you, Victoria said it best, your voice of reason, sometimes you put things in perspective for all of us that we need to, we need to hear and we're definitely going to miss that. I also want to thank both you and your family, Elaine, it's such a time commitment being on the school board, I don't know that people realize.
I don't know that people realize that, but you've always been dedicated to everything that you've done, and thank you for that. And thank you, Elaine, for letting this happen for so many years.
Thanks, cheerleader.
We're doing this by seniority?
Yeah.
Well, I'll say it aloud, when you called and announced to me on the phone, when you were calling each of us weeks ago, weeks ago, months ago, whatever level it was, I just remembered that, yeah, every time that we've come into like this emotional state about a decision to make, Todd, you've been the one with the logic and the heart that kind of brought us back to earth. And yeah, going to eat with Todd Yudovia is exciting. He can, he can make a happy hour, small plate, sound like the most amazing thing in the world. And it's been great to have your mentorship and your advice over the last four or five years, it hasn't been five years from you. Just to be along the ride with you. You are the happiest guy I know, and I know some happy people. I appreciated that as an example of how to approach things. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for our service.
So I won't talk about food or how happy you are.
Well, you could.
I personally just, for being the newest board member, appreciate everything you have helped me with to help me understand, as well as the year I spent on your left side when I first started on the board, and always willing to answer questions for me, never making me feel like I should know things or that I'm bothering you. And I just appreciate the way you do settle the rest of us, and you kind of hold us all together. So thank you, thank you for everything. I am sad that I didn't get to spend more years like everybody else getting to know you better, but I do appreciate the year that I had and look forward to more, not as a board member, obviously, but as a friend.
Yeah.
It's bound to be a performance at a school still, right?
Oh, yeah.
You'll still be around, Todd.
He's not going anywhere. Thank you, Steph.
We'll be at Image Tuesday, a week from now.
Cool.
Well, Todd, we got you a little something from the board, a little party.
And guess what it involves?
I don't know.
It looks like food.
It's not music.
Wow, a lot of stuff. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. We'll consume this, and we'll be thinking of you, so yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome. But that's not all. You are a family of artists, and as it happens, so is my family, amateur artists, all of them. And most of them have gone into music, but one of them went into graphic arts. I don't know if you've ever met my oldest, Rachel, but when we thought about and talked about your service on the board and the way the chain of rock with the kids, the thing that comes to mind is the most enthusiastic and the most heartwarming is the Vancouver Pops, that's the name, right? Vancouver Pops, the Minnetoka Swing Band, and the performances. And so I had my daughter, I commissioned her to do a little work of art for you.
Really?
Which is kind of emblematic of that, and we want you to have this with our things.
Wow, it's a bag?
She went as far as asking me, what music should I put there? So that's Doc Severnson's arrangement of Glenn Miller's "In the Moon."
Awesome.
One of my favorites, and you don't have to keep the bag, but thank you again.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's great.
I thought you captured your backside pretty well.
But it's inspired by a photograph that Community Relations took and published. It isn't a duplication of the photograph, but it's that idea of performing for kids that she really, I thought she captured really well.
Yep, it depicts my best side. Yeah, well, thank you very much.
All right, so I don't think we have anything else, and it's all about Todd tonight.
No.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so we will move on to future agenda items. Todd, do you have any?
Uh, no.
Yeah. Does anyone have anything they want to add? Okay. All right, next, we will move on to citizen comments. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board, you have three minutes, and it cannot be personnel or legal in nature. Looks like we have one person that has signed up, Bill Bevel. Hi, Bill.
Hi, how are you?
If you'll give us your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm trying to set a good example. How do you do this right? Okay, my name is Bill Bevel, my address is 1004 Northwest 43rd Street, and I'm here to address the board about an issue about school safety. According to US Bureau of Labor and Statistics, the usual, the typical to the general public incident of a non-fatal injury is about 7.5 per 10,000 workers. One of the most dangerous professions, police and sheriff's departments, those people that work in law enforcement are subject to about 150 incidents per 10,000 people. We know that logging, fishing linemen have more fatalities, but as far as incidents of injury are similar to the norm. I'm here to talk to you about the most dangerous job in Park County, which currently is an SLC teacher in the Evergreen School District. As far as per incident, closer to net nurse practitioners and those people that work with people that are a little bit, that have mental difficulties, I, they come to me, and I talk to them, and they email me, they contact me on the phone. Today, I talked to a teacher that was home waiting for a doctor's appointment, because she has kidney problems, because she doesn't get to the bathroom enough. This is a serious thing. There's, we're really having problems with support. While our SLC teachers have been patiently waiting for us, for the admin, even for their union to help them out, it feels like their calls are falling on deaf ears. One of the things I tried to do, I bring this up in every labor management, and last month, I just wanted to give them lunches and breaks, and it turned into them having to do another task, coming up with schedules that weren't really followed. The principals are, of course, spread thin, as we know, and sometimes nobody comes to relieve them when they need time for the breaks, let alone the planning time. Some of the effects are job stress, they're put in high-risk situations daily where the wrong decision can result in them or a student being injured. And many times, when there are incidents, they're blamed for the results. There's a huge impact in the loss of learning, loss of learning amongst the peers, amongst the other students in the SLC classroom, that are making progress, that end up progressing because they witnessed violence and trauma. And we know that many of them come with trauma of their own. So as far as the next steps, I'm running out of time, but I asked them, I said, what do you, what do you want? What do you want from us? What would you like us to help you with? And one of the things we need to do is make this a priority. It's much more likely tomorrow that an SLC teacher will be injured, and there'll be a gunman, or somebody coming into our schools, or a slipper will fall. They're getting hurt every single day. I've talked to teachers with their hair pulled out, scratches, bites, cuts, it's really, pretty shocking. The thing they want really is for us to listen to them, to take their inputs seriously. They don't want to be handled person by person. A lot of times, this comes with, well, give me a list of people, and then they try to handle each one of them, but they're saying it's not really individual incidences, it's the entire system is putting us in these situations. I know I'm out of time. But one of the things is, is that they really need the time to work with their parent educators. They need relief, they need those parent educators to be paid to plan with them, that they can collaborate with their peers, that they have time to plan. A lot of times, the issue is that they don't know from one day to the next what it is that is working, because they don't have time to share it. And just in conclusion, I think that we're in a limited window here. We know how important this is, how it's been in the press, these extreme behaviors in classrooms, and I'm fearful, I'm very fearful that these kids are going to be looked at as something that needs to be further institutionalized, when really, the caring adults that we have are already working with them, they just need our support to be able to help these students out, these most vulnerable students. And I really think that not just our district, but we need to march forward to the state and demand more support for special ed and safety in our classrooms. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Bill Bevel. All right, is there anyone else that did not sign up that wishes to come up and address the board this evening? Okay, well, at this time, the board will go into recess to sign documents. We will reconvene in a board workshop where we will do budget development, have a board meeting debrief, legislative updates, we'll get another superintendent's update, and then we will go into executive session where we will evaluate candidates for Board of Director open position, District Number Four. We are now in recess.